Welcome, everybody. Let's call to order the special Town Council meeting for January 2nd, 2024. If you could stand up for the pledge allegiance. CJ, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a breathing and justice for all.
If you guys could please stay standing. Want to do a moment of silence. We recently lost a good friend to the town, Bob Hannan.
Thank you very much.
I want to welcome everybody to the meeting. As you can see, we're a whole new slate, some repeat offenders, myself, Brian, and Keith. We have Dave and Amy on the left of me, Sarah and Patty to the right of me. So, please welcome your new council. All right, Sarah.
What am I doing?
Make the motion. Where's the paper I gave you?
I don't have it.
Right there.
I move to appoint Keith Weber as the acting Town Council Chair.
A second?
I got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
So usually, the Town Council shall elect an acting chair at its first meeting in January, following the municipal election, and this is according to our chair.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes, thank you. Keith, number two, please.
Agenda item B2, I'd like to make a motion that the attached rules of procedure be adopted for the term of this Town Council effective January 2nd, 2024.
A second?
We have a motion and a second, Kathy?
If I left on your place as an updated rules of procedure, so if you guys could look at that, rules of procedure, we'll work off that one. There were anything in red is some changes that we've made. And then on the second page, under number four, is my understanding that potentially that it wasn't that clear that members online were allowed to make public comments. So I made a change to try to clarify that. So that's what the difference is between what was in your packet and what is here. Other than that, if you have any questions on the changes?
Anybody? Everybody good? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Is that noise going to happen every time we pass a motion?
It's a new thing, it's 2024.
I like it.
Got to change it up. All right, we have no presentations, recognitions?
No.
Okay. Public hearing, Maureen.
Yes. This is the legal notice, Town of Farmington Public Hearing. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024, at 7:05 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers to amend the Farmington Town Code, Chapter 111, Historic Areas, for the purpose of adding one historic property under the jurisdiction of the Farmington Historic District Commission, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 19th day of December, 2023. Kathleen A. Belansky, Town Manager.
Kathy?
We have Garrett here, our Assistant Town Planner, that's going to give us a brief presentation. Welcome, Garrett.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Garrett Dale, I'm your Assistant Town Planner, for those of you that I haven't met yet. So really quickly, I'm just here to give a quick presentation for the proposed change to the Farmington Historic District. Really, the part of the Town Council is amending the ordinance to include the property. The way the process works is first, a homeowner contacts Town Staff with a request to join the public, the Farmington Historic District. The Town Council then appoints a study committee made up of the members of the respective Historic District Commission, in this case, Farmington. We prepare a report, it's submitted to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, the State Historic Preservation Office, SHIPO, and the property owners as well for review. The State Historic Preservation Office will submit comments back to us, if any, with regards to the port, then the study committee will hold a public hearing, which was held on November 14th. And then the final step is to have the ordinance amended by the Town Council this evening. So here's the map of the Farmington Historic District, and the property we're looking at is 9 Waterville Road, which is located right here. There's the home. This home and a number of other homes on this section of Waterville Road were all constructed by Noah Wallace as income-producing properties. And the home is 9 Waterville Road, it's also known as Brookside. The current owners are Jared and Catherine Ritter. The home was built in 1898. It's a colonial or vial style, and it's located on the western side of Waterville Road, across from the Country Club. So as I said, we'll be amending Article, or Chapter 111, Article 1, Historic District and Properties of the Farmington Town Code. The items that will be amended are Exhibit A, which is the list of historic properties, and Exhibit B, which is the map I showed you earlier. And also, the effective date will be based on if you vote to approve tonight. And then here's the list of historic properties with 9 Waterville Road located at the bottom.
All right, we don't have any questions from the council for this now, but anyone from the public would like to speak or ask any questions about this? About this topic only? Anybody? Kat, anybody online that wish to discuss this or have a question?
I do not see any hands raised.
All right, then I guess we can close out the public meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. Okay, on to E, new items. We have none. Now we will open a public comment. Anybody can come up, state your name, address, and please let me talk to five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Town Council. The main reason that I'm here is just to congratulate all of you, each of you, on your election to the council and to wish you well. There was a beautiful ceremony a few minutes ago, the swearing-in ceremony. I wanted to just thank you. I'm supposed to say who I am. My name is Mike D'Amico. I live at 6 Debra Lane, and I'm the State Representative for the 21st District. That's official now, okay. So I just wanted to thank everyone for stepping up. This is a big job, a very important job. You are doing the community a great service just by standing for election, and by being elected, and by doing the good work that the council always does for the community. So I just wanted to offer my appreciation and my thanks. I'm confident that in the best tradition of the Town Council, you're always going to do what's best for the Town of Farmington. So, secondly, I wanted to just highlight a couple of items that I noticed on the agenda. In the Town Manager's Report, it's indicated that myself and the other members of the Farmington delegation in the legislature will be invited to the February, I guess it's the first meeting in February, traditionally. And I want you to know, I guess I'm RSVPing right now, I will be here for that meeting. I always look forward to it. We have a good discussion about what's going on at the state level and how that affects the Town of Farmington. And I always look forward to your questions, your good ideas, your concerns. So if you have anything that you would like me to talk about specifically at that meeting, please let me know in advance. The Chair has already given me a couple of ideas of things that he would like to know about. But you can always call me or email me, and I'll be happy to provide whatever information that I can. So I will see you in February. Lastly, I wanted to bring to your attention Agenda Item L11 on tonight's agenda. It has to do with an appointment to the Board of Education. Now, as you're all aware, this vacancy on the Board of Education is due to, for a good reason. It's due to Patty Boy Williams' election to the Town Council. So she, therefore, she is no longer a member of the Board of Education. And as you know, the Town Charter dictates that when filling a vacancy for an elected position, and Board of Ed is an elected position, that the council is required to appoint someone from the same party as the party of the person who vacated the office. So by custom, and by tradition, and by respecting the will of the voters, it has been the tradition that the person that is nominated by that party is appointed in a bipartisan fashion by the Town Council. So I certainly expect that that is what will happen tonight. Due to our good fortune, it's my understanding that the person who's going to be nominated for that job is eminently qualified for the position on the Board of Education, and a person who's deserving of your support, and his name is Matthew Hutt Wagner. And many of you know Matt. You know that he is an engaged and involved member of the community here in Farmington. He has served ably and well as a Planning and Zoning Commissioner. He has served as the co-president of the Union School PTO. He has served as a Commissioner on the Board of Assessment Appeals. He was very instrumental in the organization that helped to bring about the successful completion of the high school referendum, Comprehensive FHS. He was very involved in that. He's a Cub Scout leader. He's a Justice of the Peace. He has experience that is well-suited to what is required of a Board of Education member. He is in his professional life, he has been involved in finance and accounting, budget planning, cost control, efficiencies. So if anyone is qualified for the position that Board of Ed requires, it would be Matt. So I would urge you to give careful consideration to Matt Hutt Wagner. He is a thoughtful and deliberative and inquisitive individual. He is very accessible, he is easy to talk to. As I said, his professional and personal skill set fits perfectly into what a Board of Education member needs to do. And I would say, Mr. Chair and members of the council, you could not do any better than to appoint Matt Hutt Wagner to fill the vacancy that is currently existing on the Board of Education, and I would urge that you appoint him unanimously. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up? Anybody? Anybody online?
We do have someone online.
We have one person on the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. My apologies.
It's okay. Hi, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. My name's Liz Fitzsimmons, I'm at 6 Bello Lane in Unionville. And I am speaking tonight as a member of the town. I am also currently the Chair of the Board of Education, but I will only be the Chair for five more days. But I'm not speaking in that capacity whatsoever. I'm speaking just as a member of the town. I would like to just say that I have no idea what the Town Council is planning on doing this evening. I can only say this, that in my 15 years of being a member of this town, I have known several members of this Town Council, including Joe Cabotifaro, I have known Patty Boy Williams, I've known Sarah, I've known Keith, I've known several of you, and I know that many of you are bipartisan in nature and will do nothing but what's the right thing for this town. Some of you, I don't know as well. I do know that I am surprised that a State Representative would get up and talk about an appointment to a specific board, and talk and ask for a Town Council to make a specific appointment. That seems completely inappropriate to me. I would just say that I vote for my Town Council representatives, and I expect them to use their best judgment, and if I don't think that they're using their best judgment, then I just won't vote for them the next time. So congratulations on all being elected. I know that you're going to do what you think is the right thing, and I would leave it up to you. And I am extremely disappointed in my State Representative for speaking out tonight on a board appointment by my Town Council. I think that's overstepping and inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you had somebody online.
Just want to make sure everybody is good inside here. Okay, online, please.
We have Tim Kelly.
Tim, can you hear us? Tim, are you there?
He's on you, Dad. I'm not seeing any audio from him.
All right.
Are we sure it's not on our end cap before we move on?
Yeah, I can, we can check in the back, but typically...
Just make sure we're, start of the new year.
Our technical...
Brian, if you can hear us, do you think it's on Tim's end?
Just check, because we're going to move on.
If it's not on our end...
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Tim, sorry we can't hear you. Hopefully, you can check in again with us in two weeks.
Right.
All right, on to, let's see, where are we at? The reading of the minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the December 12th, 2023 regular Town Council meeting.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. On to H, reading of communications and written appeals. None?
None.
All right. I is report of committees. We have none for that. Report of the Chair and Liaisons. I do have a quick couple notes for the Town Chair notes. They'll be super fast. Tomorrow, January 3rd, the Farmington Valley Generals, which is our hockey team at the high school, is holding the Luke Rue Memorial Hockey Game. It starts at 7:30 PM at Avon Old Farms. All the proceeds will benefit the Luke Rue Memorial Fund. It's open to all the public, and it supports a great cause. So if you guys can attend, that would be great. We have a high school game of basketball going on now, we have another one going on on Friday for the boys' basketball team. January 5th, the Olive Bar has live music. This Saturday, Bruno's Cafe, which is a new little coffee shop at 55 Mill Lane, is having a pop-up jewelry event. We also have, the Chamber is hosting the 2024 Regional Economic Breakfast next Thursday. On February 22nd, Five Corners Restaurant is hosting a curated wine dinner. The Wooden Tap in Sugo all now have their igloos, so if you're looking for a little outdoor dining experience, you can go there. Wentay Pub will have live music on January 10th. And the last, January 11th, Naples Pizza will be holding a fundraiser for our services of the elderly. They'll be giving 10% of the day sales to the services of the elderly. And that is it for my chair report. Kathy? Kay?
So you have the written report in front of you, I'll just go through some of the highlights. So again, I've been, the Town Council budget schedule is attached, so you do have the budget schedule and your meeting schedule. As State Representative D'Amico said, it's customary to invite our legislative group to our February meeting, so I'm just looking for consensus from the group here that we still want to do that?
Yes.
Right? Okay. Great, so they'll come first thing on the first February meeting. Strategic plan update, so you have the strategic plan that is attached to your packet, and that was the plan that was approved in 2022. Just so you note that that was in 2022, a lot has happened since that time, but that's the one that was approved in 2022, and that will be the one that we'll work off of. Typically, what we do is that at the next meeting, we'll have a PowerPoint presentation, and I'll go through the goals, and I'll make some edits of things that, obviously, that we've accomplished before, things of that nature. If there's things that I feel that potentially that I would like the council to consider about putting, being put on the strategic plan, I'll add that in, but I'll put my name next to it so you know that that came from me. And then if any of the council people have any ideas that what they would like to see included in the strategic plan, typically, it's the last row, which is the goal section of it, let me know. You don't have to come up with the exact verbiage, if you want to even just have a topic or something like that, just let me know, and I'll include that in for our discussion purposes. If you have a specific way you want it written, you can do that too, but you don't have to do it that way. And I think I gave a due date, just so I can get it in. I will put your initials next to it, so the group knows where the topic came from. And then at that next meeting, we'll probably either sit around the table or sit up here, we'll have a PowerPoint, and we'll have a discussion and try to start updating the plan. Just again, so one of the things I try to have the council think about, and you have, I think we put it in the, it's a chart, it's red, yellow, and green, and when you think about initiatives and things like that, think about the timeframe, the cost, the complexity, the staff workload, and the Town Council workload. And when I put the new goals in or the old goals, I'll put my opinion on what I think that the timeframe, the cost, red, obviously, is a lot, you know, it's high intensity, probably high cost, yellow and green, and I think that's important. So when we look at the whole strategic plan as a whole, obviously, we don't want to see the whole strategic plan with reds, because that means it's expensive, and it's time-consuming, and very complex, and it's just hard to get all that done in two years. We also want to look potentially that this is a two-year plan, so typically, we try to get, start moving on most of the items, but if there is some items, we put maybe priority two next to it with the thought that we really would not pick it up until probably next year, and we'd consider whether or not we would do it in the second year. But if the capacity of the council, the staff, and money was available, then we take that on. Another thing just to remember is that we do have the biggest project in town history going on right now, the Farmington High School. That is, even though it's a high school project on the school side, it is, it's a lot of, it's very complex, and my staff is very involved in it too, as many of you know. We also have the 1928, the renovation, moving out of this building, moving into that building, designing it, things of that nature. Again, very staff, high-complexity type of projects. So I'm just saying that when, trying to have expectations when we get goals and objectives of really just how much we can do with our resources. So that's the strategic plan update. Town Council photo shoot would be the 23rd, come at 6:30, we'll get our picture taken for the back wall. And then I just listed the upcoming Town Council meetings and the topics that will take place. Again, the 16th, we'll start talking about the updating the strategic plan. If we are ready to adopt it, we would do it at the 16th. If not, we'd again talk about it a little bit on the 23rd, and with the hopeful that we'd be ready to adopt it, because to really do our budget and things like that, we need to know what our strategic plan is, so we need to get that as ironed out as close as we can. And then on the 23rd, we'd start having our budget discussion. Joe Swetki, our Finance Director, would give us an updated financial forecast, and we'd talk about that on the 23rd. And then leading into February 13th is our regular meeting, and February 27th would be our first budget meeting, which would be the capital budget, and that would be with the Board of Education and my department heads. Typically, we don't take any action on the capital budget at that time, we just kind of, because it's a big part of the budget, it usually takes quite a bit of discussion. We do that on the 27th, so then in March, when we're doing the budget, we don't, it saves us some time, because we've already looked at the capital budget, so it's to be more efficient with everyone's time. So that is it with my manager's report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kathy? So again, just remember for the strategic plan, if you have any ideas, thoughts, please talk with Kathy beforehand, and we can try to iron it up before we come to sit down at our next meeting. Keith, can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion to accept the Town Manager's Report.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. L1, please.
Agenda item L1, I'd like to make a motion that blank be appointed as corporate counsel for the period January 2024 through January 2026.
A second?
We have a motion and a second, Kathy?
So the Town Council is the appointing body for our legal services. It's best practice is to review legal services on a periodic basis. I'm recommending at this time that we go out for our legal services, which would be our Corporation Counsel, our Town Attorney, our Bond Counsel, our Labor Attorney, and our land use. Halloran and Sage has been our Town Attorney since 2012, and Duncan has been our Assistant, which is our Town Attorney, since 2012. Pullman and Colmley have been our Bond Counsel since 2021. Lisa and Lazaric has been our Labor Counsel since 2012, and Updike Kelly has been our land since 2020. I think it would be a good time to go out, and if the council would like to do that, I have a motion later on on the agenda to set up an ad hoc committee to go out for proposals for legal services.
All right, any questions about it?
So would we be, if we're going out for bid, are we then not appointing Corporation Counsel tonight?
Yes.
Correct. I think we'll pull the motion, if we all in the same consensus of exploring our options.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so I think we're all in agreement.
I'd like to pull my motion.
One more time?
I'd like to pull my motion. Mr. Chair?
All right, we will pull that motion. And that will leave us from, all the way down from one to five. We'll have no action on those items. So we'll go to L6, please.
Agenda item L6, I'd like to make a motion that Joe Swetki be appointed Treasurer from January 2024 until January 2026, and that compensation for the Treasurer be set at $5,000 annually.
A second?
We have a motion and a second, Kathy?
Joe has been our Treasurer since he was with the Town of Farmington, and we have to appoint a Treasurer every two years.
All right, and obviously, we're following the same pattern as we did previous before.
Yep.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item L7, I'd like to make a motion that Julie Albert be appointed Deputy Treasurer from January 2024 until January 2026.
A second?
We have a motion and a second.
Julie has been the Assistant Director of Finance since 1997, and we typically appoint her as the Deputy Treasurer.
Excellent. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item L8, I'd like to make a motion that the following banks and investment pools be designated as depositories for the town funds as listed below.
A second?
We have a motion and a second, Kathy?
These are the banks that the Finance Director has recommended, this is where we would be putting the town's money in the various banks.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Kathy, any changes, or is this the same list as...
I think there is changes on this. Joe is here. Joe, is there, has there been any changes to this list? I think between mergers and things like that, there has been some changes, but you can answer that.
The majority of the banks would save. There's been a couple of additions. Westfield Bank, actually, since the last time this was gone, there's been subsequent follow-ups. So the only real new bank is Northwest Community Bank, although this had to approve prior to this time at some point along the way. One was dropped off. I tried to do something with the bank, not a bank, an investment book called Stone Castle, that didn't work out, so it dropped to Northwest, adding Northwest Community Bank to, basically, some changes since the last time.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item L9, I'd like to make a motion that the following be appointed as members of or liaisons to the following entities or committees, and there's a robust list below of our chores.
A second?
We have a motion and a second, Kathy?
You have your names next to it. There is a little bit of a difference that we, I spoke about with the Chair, is that how it's listed here is that on a monthly basis, these groups or liaisons would report on a monthly basis, so they would be listed on every council agenda, and we'd report like we typically do. Then the ones underneath that are quarterly would only be on on a quarterly basis, and that would go when I report quarterly to the Town Council, I do a quarterly report, we'd list those, and these would be the quarterly reports, and then as needed, would be the ones that are listed at the bottom. So instead, you'd only be reporting quarterly if you're in that section, monthly if you're in the top, and only as needed if you're on the bottom.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Question, Kathy, that's just, it's not based on when they meet, it's based on the reporting.
Right. Yep, exactly.
And one other comment unrelated, the Human Relations Commission and Racial Equity Task Force, those are currently separate commissions, but I understand... And one other comment unrelated, the Human Relations Commission and Racial Equity Task Force, those are currently separate commissions. But I understand there is a plan to try to figure out a way to combine them in some way for efficiencies.
Yep. And I think what, right now, we're, I think I would use the word fluid about how we're going to do it. But I think for efficiencies, put them together. And then there'll be some talk at the group level of how they want to do it, whether it's going to be a subcommittee of the Human Relations Commission, or how it's going to work out. So I think it's fluid. And speaking with the chairperson, I think it's more for efficiencies and having it under the umbrella of the Human Relations Commission. But again, the reporting is a little bit different, too, because the Human Relations Commission is a liaison, and the racial equality is a voting member. So there is some things that have to be worked out. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Brian.
Just one quick question. And that is that the historic commission meets monthly, and it's going to be reported on quarterly now?
Correct. You know, try to make life a little easier for everybody.
I think what we envision is that, you know, what is being reported on on some of these groups probably doesn't have to be on a monthly basis. And then on a quarterly basis, there could be a summary of what happened during that quarter. And so giving the council people a little bit of, you know, not as a heavy lift on some of this stuff. And we figured that also, it would be good, when I do my quarterly reports, a good thing that it can be put on. And I envision that you could either call the staff person, listen to some of them, go through the minutes, and then just report on the summary of what happened on a quarterly basis.
Sorry, one more question. For example, I assume if there is an update that doesn't match on the quarter, there could be one made in some way, shape, or form. For example, the Green Efforts Cleanup Day, if it didn't meet with the quarter.
Yeah, of course. Yeah.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Patty?
Motion L11, I move that Matthew Hut Wagner be appointed to the Board of Education for the balance of a four-year term, beginning immediately and ending in January 2026.
And I second that motion.
Discussion.
As the outgoing Board of Ed member, I have worked with Matt in a variety of capacities, Comprehensive FHS. We've, I've worked with him, frankly, and I've heard a lot, as we were running for office this year, I got to listen to his opinions, how he wants to, his strong feelings of support and wanting to work in the community and help our schools improve. And I think he would be an excellent person to have on the board.
I would also, I kind of would build off of what Patty had mentioned in, during the public comment period. I think Matt has demonstrated just the finest qualities of what a Farmington resident can be. And that's somebody who has certainly given his time and efforts to boards and commissions, the town planning and zoning. He's been on the Board of Assessment of Appeals. He's worked at the Community Outreach Director for Comprehensive FHS, Treasurer of the Unionville Cub Scout PAC 170, Union School PTO Member, Town Council Liaison for St. Mary's Church. Over 20 years of finance and accounting for the Walt Disney Company, representing ESPN Division. There isn't anybody that could meet the qualifications that Matt has as far as being somebody who wants to contribute wholeheartedly to this community. And I think Matt would be an excellent choice. And I would strongly recommend that everybody gives a chance for things to move ahead in a very positive direction. And I certainly couldn't find a better candidate than Matt Hutwagner. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Brian?
Well, I couldn't agree more with Patty, with Dave, with Mike. We talked about so many of his abilities. But his, his character as an individual, I know no better man than Matt. He is a man of character. He brings that to his work. He brings that to his community. I know he will bring that to the Board of Ed. And his passion for his town, for the students in the schools, which is so critical with his kids in the schools, I know he really cares about that. And that is, he is a caring man. There's no other way to say it. And I really appreciate everything you bring, not just what you might bring to this position, but what you bring to our community is just tremendous, Matt. And thank you for everything that you do for us.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
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 So we have a four to three against. Motion fails. Keith?
I make a motion that Martin Skelly be appointed to the Board of Education for the balance of a four-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 2026.
I second.
Discussion, please.
Martin Skelly has been a resident of Farmington for more than 30 years. He resides on the eastern side of town, along with his wife, Donna. Martin recently retired from his second career as a certified elementary teacher for Middletown School Systems after 21 years of service. 20 of those years, he served as a fourth grade teacher. Some of his career highlights are, he was on the district data team and served as a presenter at the Connecticut Association of School Administrators Seminar on Data Teams. He was a State of Connecticut cooperating teacher. He was part of the Connecticut Best and Team Mentor Program. He served on the Math, Science, and Social Studies Curriculum Committees. He served on the Building Safety Committee. He taught math, science, and computer programming in after-school programs. He was the lead teacher volunteer for the Can Construction Competition, which is a global nonprofit charity that creates structures out of full cans, which are then donated to local food banks. Prior to teaching, Martin held various supervisory positions as a water and wastewater treatment operator for 20 years, and was certified in both Connecticut and New York for water and wastewater treatment. In addition to those professional credentials, Martin has also consistently volunteered to support his community throughout his life. He's a former president and vice president of a local union in Catskill, New York. He is a former volunteer firefighter. He has volunteered for the town of Farmington in our last four municipal elections. And this past October, he took the state's moderator certificate course. Beyond all that, Martin has a bachelor's and master's degree in math and education, as well as two associate's degrees in science and applied science. Martin has also been a registered Democrat for over 40 years. I cannot think of anyone more qualified as an educator, a professional, or volunteer to recommend for this appointment. And I strongly endorse Martin Skelly for the Board of Education.
Any other discussion?
I'm sorry, I don't know this man. I'm wondering why our candidate was so unanimously turned down by the Republicans. I'm kind of disappointed in that. I thought we were going to have a very different council this year. And I'm very surprised, and honestly, a little shocked, that that is how you proceed with our very first vote and how we're going to work together. And I don't see that as working together. I really don't. It's kind of surprising, disappointing. I think that is on you to set the example for how we're going to conduct ourselves as a council. Very disappointed to say that it's going to be, it seems to me sadly divisive. Hard to say, because I respect each one of you so much. And I'm sorry that I don't feel that it works both ways. Well, I'm sorry.
It's okay. That's what we're here for.
No, that's not what we're here for. We are not here for that. We are here to work together, to work together and work with the people we feel are best. And yet, I feel like politics has somehow creeped into what we're trying to do in terms of policy and in public interest. So that is very sad to say. It's hurtful to say.
Anything else?
And if I could build off of Brian's comments, I think, you know, I think there's been a tradition here where, you know, the, the party who wants to replace somebody has an opportunity to put that person forward. And it's a vacancy because Patty's successful run for the council this past November. And to, and I think kind of what, you know, Brian's talking about here, I mean, there's a certain level of, of just, you know, you know, just not an effort to work together. And that, that's surprising. I'm one of the new members. I haven't been on the council before. I look forward to working with every individual on this council. And I, you know, there's a lot of things ahead of us that we need to navigate. And certainly, you know, our nominee there is somebody who has demonstrated above all else, the commitment to this town. And the commitment to, you know, just making things better. And to categorically dismiss that is just, it's a tremendous disappointment. And then I don't think you set up Martin Skelly for success. Because Martin's going to be in a situation where he's now going to be taking this, this seat on the BOE. And I, you know, I don't know Martin Skelly. I mean, I haven't seen him at the Democratic functions. So I mean, I'm not sure how this person that you've now identified, and most likely will approve, I'm assuming you got the votes. But you're not, you're not doing this person any, any service. This person's going to be kind of an outlier on this, on the Board of Ed, you know? And I just think that that's, it's a travesty on how to, on how to operate. And so those are my comments. I'm, you know, I'm disappointed.
Anything else, Patty?
I can't speak to Mr. Skelly. I never met him. I don't know him. And I don't need to reiterate what Brian and Dave already said. But the point of a town council and the point of public meetings is to have debate and discussion. And we voted on Matt Hutwagner. And the Republicans did not raise any discussion, any comments, any concerns, which makes this appear like it's, like the discussions are happening behind closed doors and not in the public. And this is a public meeting. It's a public appointment. And I think it would have done this town, our residents, a better service for, if there had been actual debate on the prior motion.
Okay.
Well. I would just say, for whatever it's worth, Martin is a great candidate. He's going to do great on the Board of Ed. His ability to do good work on the Board of Ed will be determined on how the BOE members want to work with him. You know, it's not about, and to your point, Patty, to sit here and bang our fists and say why we are, I have my reservations about your candidate. But I, there's no reason for me to bang my fist and to denigrate anybody when I know that I have somebody who I think is a great candidate. So there are some times that it's not about why one person is bad, it's why another person is great. I understand you guys don't know Martin Skelly. But he's a great guy. He's a committed volunteer. He has the time to offer to Board of Ed. And he's going to do a great job if given the opportunity. He really will. It's, it's not about, it's, we found somebody who we think is great. We do. Just as you guys found someone who you thought is great.
I would just say, it's not really, we're, we're the party filling this vacancy. You have the majority, and everybody's going to, you know, we understand that. But, you know, I think the tradition of a party nominating somebody for a seat that's being vacated by a member of the same party that has moved up to the town council is a tradition that should continue. It's a tradition that I think is an honorable tradition. And this sets a path in a different direction. Even though Martin Skelly, I'm sure, is a fantastic person. I don't know him personally. But this is not the way to conduct business and set the precedent for future nominations. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Got a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Agenda item L25.
Agenda item L25, I make a motion that Kyle Cunningham be appointed to the Retirement Board for a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 2026.
I second.
Got a motion and second.
This is, these are the union representation on the retirement board, and they are, they come from the unions.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item L26, I make a motion that Steve Egan be appointed to the Retirement Board for a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 2026.
I second.
We got a motion and second. Any discussion? And he is the police department?
He's the police department rep. Yep.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry, I need this last name.
Kat can say it. Yeah.
Chris Jezidowicz.
Jezidowicz. I make a motion, I make a motion that Chris Jezidowicz be appointed to the Retirement Board for a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 2026.
I second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Question.
Yes.
Is this person being appointed as a representative of any particular?
Everybody we're doing are employees for the town staff. So they're, each individual union going into the voice.
And Chris happens to just be a highway employee.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
L30.
Agenda item L30, that Jeff Porter be appointed to the Retirement Board for a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 2026.
I second.
And I believe Jeff is?
He is on, he's the supervisors' union.
Supervisors' union. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item L32, I make a motion that Bruce Polsky be appointed to the Retirement Board for a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 2026.
Okay, yeah. I second.
We have a motion and second. Is it Bruce Polsky, or is it?
Bruce Polsky.
It is?
Mm-hmm.
Excellent.
And he's a Board of Ed member. I mean, Board of Ed represent, right? From the board side?
No, the, the teachers' union representative is 20, L29.
That's right.
Oh, okay.
Who's, what's L32?
Art Marquez is, 32, I think, is just a resident appointment.
That's a resident.
I'm sorry, so wrong.
That's our mistake.
That was our mistake. That's my mistake. I apologize. So.
I rescind another motion.
I'm sorry.
So I'm doing?
L29.
Kat, what's the first?
L29.
First name?
Art.
Art.
I make a motion that Art Marquez, is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Be appointed to the Retirement Board for a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 2026.
I second.
Motion and second. He is part of the Board of Ed.
He is the?
The teachers' union.
Teachers' union. Gotcha. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I believe that is it. Any old business?
Uh, no.
Okay, on to new business. N1.
Agenda item N1, I'd like to make a motion to the Farmington, sorry, I'd like to amend the Farmington Town Code, Chapter 111, Historic Areas, for the purpose of adding one historic property under the jurisdiction of the Farmington Historic District Commission.
I second.
Motion and second. Kathy?
So you had the public hearing from Garrett. And again, this is adding nine Waterville Road. And the property owners agree with this recommendation.
Any other questions about this for Kathy? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item N2, to approve the following blighted building list. There's some lists below.
I second.
Got a motion and second. Kathy?
So you can see the properties, and it's a pretty detailed explanation of each of the properties and where we are with them. So every year, we create a new blight building list. And then it's our objective to get the properties cleaned up. If we can't get the properties cleaned up, we start finding the properties. And eventually, we lean the properties. And hopefully, again, the objective is to get the properties cleaned up. So this is our list for this January.
Any questions about the list? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item N3, to review and approve the attached capital improvement policy.
I second.
So the next couple of items are our financial policies. So this one's our capital improvement policy. So our capital improvement policy states that the council shall review the policy on a biannual basis during the month of January of each even-numbered year. The town council last adopted this in 2022. And we do not see any need for changes at this time.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item N4, to review and approve the attached debt management policy.
Second.
We have a motion and second.
Again, this is another one of our financial policies. This is our debt management policy. We do not see any need for changes at this time. And the last time it was adopted was in January of 2022.
Any questions for Kathy? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item N5, to review and approve the attached reserve policy.
I second.
We have a motion and second.
This is our reserve policy. We do not see any changes at this time. And the last time it was adopted was in January of 2022.
Any questions?
What, what percentage are we currently at with our reserve?
Joe, do you have?
18.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries.
Agenda item N6, to review and approve the attached employee health self-insurance fund reserve policy.
A second?
Motion second?
Council last adopted this again in January of 2022, and we do not see any need for changes at this time.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item N7, to set a public hearing on February 27, 2024 at 6:00 PM on the town manager's proposed seven-year capital improvement plan.
A second?
Sorry. Takes a while. The proposed schedule, so at six, between 6:00 and 6:30, there'll be a public hearing where myself and Superintendent Greeter will give an overview of the capital budget. Then at 6:30 to 7:30, the Board of Education will be here, and we'll go through it in detail. And then from 7:30 to 9:30 approximately, my departments will go through the capital budget. And as, as I stated earlier, we typically do not make changes on it, we just go run through it in February.
Any questions about the seven-year project? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item N8, to establish a town council subcommittee on legal services to review legal service proposals for town attorney, bond counsel, labor attorney, land use, environmental attorney, and to make recommendations on the appointments to the town council.
A second?
Motion second.
I'm not sure if anyone's ready to volunteer for this. It would be helpful if we were ready to go, because then we can get started having the attorney. So I don't know, Joe, if you?
We talked Patty, I think we're all good on your side? And Sarah?
Yes.
Patty and Sarah for the two positions.
Okay, and myself? So Maureen, you got that, it would be Sarah, Patty, and myself.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Brings us to O, right?
Nine.
Ooh.
Big tax refund.
Like to make them, N9, to approve the following property tax refunds.
As listed.
As listed below.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on the list? Besides not seeing your own names on there? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item O1, executive session, to adjourn the meeting to executive session as permitted by Connecticut General Statute's Section 1-225A for the purpose of real estate acquisition. In attendance in the meeting will be town council and the town manager.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. We will go into executive session if everyone's in favor.
Aye.
Let's move into executive session. Thank you, everybody, for coming out to our first meeting.